Five o'clock on November 12th, 2019. We are having a Lakeville Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Special welcome to Rich, Mr. Richard LaCamera, who won last week's election to be the new selectman to fulfill the remainder of the three-year term that was vacated. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you.
You want to say anything? No?
No.
First thing on our agenda is reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if you want to go, if you want me to...
No, I'll go.
Okay. You go.
I make a motion that we appoint Leah Fabian as chairman of the board.
I'll second that motion.
Sorry, because I don't know how these meetings go. Can you...are you talking amongst yourselves, or do we get feedback as citizens?
Nope.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you're seconding the most. Do I have to stand up? I've never been...
You can stand up at the podium, and if you would just announce your name and address.
Sure. So my name is Neil Cohane, 61 Montgomery Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. I understand that you just are trying to vote a new chairman in. I know you both are aware that John Powderly, the current chairman, just got out of the hospital and he's in rehab. So I don't know if this is legal. It's certainly, I think, unethical. He did plan a meeting next week when he's out of rehab. I certainly think any adult would let the man be here while you're changing the committee.
I'll address that.
Sure.
They had a reorganization the day after Mitzi left as a selectman back in September.
Yep.
And out of respect for seniority, Leah appointed John the chairman of the committee. Out of disrespect for Leah, he did not appoint Leah as the vice chairman of the board.
So it's disrespect?
It's disrespect.
How is that, sir?
Because you're supposed to have a vice chairman of every board.
Okay, so...
And that's in our bylaws.
It's in your bylaws.
And I've been asking to have it put on there for two months.
Okay.
And he refused.
Okay, so, okay, that's disrespectful.
Right.
Is that against the law?
I'm just making a comment, sir.
No, I understand that.
Well, to your point...
Yeah, sure.
If I was vice chair right now, like I should have been, we wouldn't be here right now.
What do you mean? You wouldn't have a meeting right now?
We wouldn't, we could wait, because right now we don't have a chair or a vice chair.
Yeah, so what's the urgency of doing it now versus next week? About Chinese invading the Pacific? I don't understand this.
Oh, that's...
I think you're right, sir.
Yeah, I...
Hey, I'm talking here, and you can come up and talk.
You know, okay, you know what? All right, let me suggest this to you too, okay?
What's the urgency of next week versus tonight?
Well, you know what? The election for me when I was running unopposed was April 1st. The board before me didn't wait for me to join the board to reappoint the chair and the vice chair. So no, there is no formal...
Okay. So does that make...so two wrongs make a right? I don't understand.
You know what? I haven't done anything wrong.
Okay, so again, what is the urgency of waiting one week when he's told you he's in the hospital?
Because I will not be here next week.
So what's wrong with the week after? What is the urgency of doing it now when he's in the hospital?
Because we needed a meeting today to address town business.
Yes.
And I know you're not aware of everything that goes on.
I'm not.
But we have a classification hearing, which sets our tax rate, which is very important.
That's tonight.
Yeah, well, we're announcing the tax classification hearing.
Tonight.
Yes.
Okay. You just said if you weren't here tonight that you'd have the meeting another time. So again, sorry, maybe I misspoke.
No, you know what? Here's what it is.
Yeah.
Mr. Powderly was just adamant about not following procedure. Right now, he's not here, and I'm the senior board member, so I'm following procedure.
He's in the hospital. He's not here out of his...out of saying, "I'm not coming."
Okay, but you know what? I'm going to end this now by saying...
You're going to end it.
He knew for months that he wasn't going to be here. He should have done the right thing and appointed me vice chair, so we wouldn't be sitting in this situation.
So out of disrespect? No, no. Again, legal or not legal, it's out of disrespect for you, so you feel slighted.
No, I don't feel slighted at all.
You don't? So again...
If Mr. LaCamera wants to be the chair right now, I can appoint him. I have no...I am neither...
I'm not arguing that. I'm asking, why aren't you waiting one week for the man to get out of the hospital?
Because we need someone sitting in the position to do the job.
Wait in one week?
What about if he doesn't come back?
Oh, so the following Monday is not okay? I don't understand this.
She can't meet the following week.
I can't be here.
Oh, so you can't meet next week, and you can't meet the following week? But you can't wait for a guy to get out of the hospital?
Well, first of all, the town has to go on.
Sure does.
And we're not going to wait five weeks.
Who said five weeks, sir?
Well, John wanted to wait five weeks till November 25th. The last meeting was October 28th.
I was told the 18th, sir.
Right.
That's next Monday.
And I couldn't be here.
So you can't make it.
Right.
So John's in the hospital, and you can't make it, but we're changing everything because you can't make it.
But you know what? Did you know the availability of all six selectmen...of all six candidates running for election?
No.
So then how can we plan any meeting?
We're having them in the hospital.
That's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant. A man's in the hospital...
A 21-year-old girl got killed the other night, okay? Anything can happen. We need to have the position fulfilled.
You bring up the death of a woman on...
If you know what? You know what? If John Powderly feels strongly that he wants us to readdress it...
I don't know how he feels.
He can ask to have it put on the agenda, and we will address it.
First of all, I have no idea how John feels. All I know is, I'm a citizen in Lakeville. You don't...we don't work for you. You work for us.
Absolutely.
You were elected by the people.
Right.
How many people in this town? 15,000?
No.
14,000?
12,000.
12,000, there you go. 11,000. 11,000 people, and two people are making a decision with a man in the hospital about decisions of kicking someone off the chairmanship.
People are elected by the people.
Yes.
So clearly, clearly, someone thinks we can make this decision.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Out of 11,000 people, so how many votes did you get?
531.
531, yeah. So 531 people are dictating that a guy's in hospital, a hospital, that you're changing something that can't wait for next week? So you're saying 531 people...
So we can't meet next week. We already said...
We already said we can't meet next week.
What is...what's the urgency of two weeks?
There's a lot of things. We've got a bunch of stuff on the agenda that needs to be discussed.
Yeah.
And me, as a new selectman...
Yeah.
Okay? The reorganization should have been done the night after the election, as we have always done in this town in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yep.
So for me to have to wait five weeks...
You have to wait.
For a meeting is ridiculous.
Any new...
So again, I just want to make this perfectly clear, and I'll let you go. Thank you for letting me have time. 531 people out of 11,000 voted you in.
Yeah.
A man's in a hospital, and you decide, "I can't wait." You work for me, sir. You work for me and my schedule.
But listen, people get sick all the time.
Absolutely. He's in the hospital, he's not sick.
Okay, but like I said to you, okay? If I had been appointed vice chair anytime in the last two...
So you're slighted by this?
No, absolutely not.
She said slighted. You said slighted.
No, you said...well, you said slighted about me.
Right.
I'm telling you the fact.
The fact is what?
The fact is, I should have...the bylaws say you appoint a chair...
Do you have those bylaws?
They're on the Lakeville website.
And they...can you tell me verbatim exactly that you need to be appointed vice chair?
It says, "We will appoint a chair and a vice chair."
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
What time limit is that?
Every...every time.
Immediately?
After the election.
So...
So after...yeah, so I was never...if I had been the vice chair right now, we wouldn't be in this situation.
Okay, so the election, forgive me, when was the election? Two weeks ago?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
So because you weren't...and I want to be perfectly clear with this. You weren't put on as vice chair, I guess, Tuesday night or Wednesday. This is why this is happening.
No, two months ago.
It was three months ago.
Well, no, no, you missed my point. Who says you have to be vice chair immediately? Where is it?
The bylaws.
Where does it say time limit in the bylaws?
You know, here's the thing, okay? The chairman sets the agenda.
That's correct.
Okay?
Yeah.
So when the chairman can't set the agenda, we have a vice chair that sets the agenda.
I understand.
Mr. Powderly would not put on any agenda to have me appointed as vice chair.
Okay.
There was two people, two positions.
Yeah.
The math works out.
I get it.
Okay.
Yeah, I get it. So where in the bylaws does it say you have to be elected or appointed vice chair immediately? Where's the time limit? Does it say the day after? Does it say a month? Does it say two months?
You know what? As chair, I can also ask for things to move along. So I do appreciate that you, you know...
So you've already named yourself chair?
Well, no. I'm hoping that we're going to vote on it.
So, okay, that's it. I'm done.
Okay, good.
But a guy's in a hospital, you're not going to wait a week or two weeks because you can't wait. You work for me in the town. 531 people voted you in.
You know what? Regardless of whether...who the winner was, was it fair for any newly-elected person to have to wait four or five weeks to have a meeting?
Yeah, again, show me the bylaws where that is...
No, answer the question.
Answer the question.
I'm telling you right now, I don't know.
No, no, answer the question.
I'm answering you the question. Does the bylaws say a day or a month?
Forget the bylaws. Should we have waited four or five weeks to have a selectmen's meeting?
Why not? How often do you have bylaws? Educate me.
We have meetings every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
And this was a scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
We even had a hearing scheduled for tonight.
Tonight?
Okay?
Guy in a hospital.
And Mr. Powderly said, "We're not having a meeting," and we had to cancel someone, okay?
So tonight, you cancel?
So just because we've had a miscommunication in the selectmen's office, and two of us now who make up a quorum...
Of course.
Feel as though...
Of course.
Right.
Someone with 531 votes who make up a quorum.
Yes.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
Okay, so two out of three.
So just remember, I'm leaving, but you guys work for 11,000 people.
I know who I work for.
I hope you do.
I know. I absolutely know who I work for.
And I'm doing the right thing for the town.
You are?
Yes, sir.
With a guy in a hospital. I just want...
I am.
Good, that's all I get to say.
You know what? Anyone's emergency or anyone's personal life can come in the middle of this job, okay?
I hear you. I understand, but human beings are human beings, and I wouldn't make a decision with someone laying in a hospital bed. That's me.
You know what? That's fine. You know what? You get to...you get to declare your unhappiness with us at the voting poll next time.
No, I get to come every week and show my unhappiness if I want to.
Sure, you can come every week.
Again, you work for me. I don't work for you.
We already said we know that.
Right. Good. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that.
Are you not going to stay for the meeting now?
No, I got my point across.
Oh, okay.
Why should I stay for the meeting?
What point?
You've already decided what you're doing. What do you need me here for?
It's all right, go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead.
Mark Knox, Pierce Ave. I get both sides of it. Out of respect for how things have gone in the past, and I think the previous election was to kind of right the ship and be transparent, why don't you just appoint her as vice chair and then conduct meetings rather than take his position?
Well, I think it goes a little farther than that, Mark. I was at the last meeting, and I don't know if you were at the last meeting, the selectmen's meeting, and I was not happy the way John treated Leah about that meeting. And he refused to compromise and even talk about putting her as the vice chairman. So right now, I'm nominating her to be the vice chair. If John wants us to put...
I tell you, I'm nominating her to be the chair.
Excuse me, as the chair, excuse me. Then if John wants to put it on the agenda for the 25th, we'll do that, and we'll discuss it again.
For him to go back to the chair and her to take the...
We can, if they want to.
If he...right.
I know that you had some discussion about the time of appointments and the time of reorganization, I should say. And from my time on the boards, typically it's end of fiscal year, unless there's upheaval in the board and then it needs to be addressed.
Right, there's a change to the board.
There's a change to the board.
And you know what?
Correct. If there's a change, I get it.
Again, typically, there's an election, and then the change gets made at the first meeting after the election. However, my two board members and the previous chair reappointed the chair and the vice chair before I ever got on the board. And like I said, I was running unopposed. So they had a reason why they didn't feel as though they could wait.
That's fine. I'm not questioning any of that, and I get that it happened.
No, and I'm just saying that, right, that you know what? Things, just for whatever reason, we need to get business done.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I think, from the appearance of the townspeople, it might look spiteful. I think it would look better if you appointed as a vice chair, to your point, to conduct business as usual until John comes back. But it's your choice otherwise, but I do think that it doesn't have a good appearance. And that's all. I'm not going to argue about it.
It's fine.
I think I support whatever you do, but I just think it has a poor appearance. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. So you nominated me chair. I seconded, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I make a motion to nominate John Powderly as vice chair.
I'll second that for conversation, at least. If John wants to be vice chair, I don't have a problem with that. If John wants us to readdress the whole reorganization, I don't have a problem with that either. He can suggest any kind of agenda item that he may want to put on the agenda, and right now, as the chair, I will put it on the agenda, unlike what I've been dealing with for the last few months, asking for things to be put on the agenda that I thought were important that would never get put on the agenda. So three people are supposed to work together, and that hasn't been happening since...for many months now. So if John wants to readdress it, that's absolutely fine. I can readdress it. Contrary to what people think, I am not dying to be any chair or whatever. I'm trying to do the right thing for the board, for the town of Lakeville.
Would you like to table that?
Vice chair.
The vice chair portion, or would you like to vote on it?
No, I think we should vote on it.
I think we should vote on it.
And if he wants to change it, we can try to change it.
We can change it. So all those in favor of John Powderly being appointed as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think we want to go through all these. Did you want to go through all these?
Uh...no, I don't.
There is one that I would like to address just because there has been a couple of conflicts. So the regional finance committee. After the chair had resigned, I picked up, I think, almost all her committees, and to say that I've been, you know, working a lot is one thing, but I've had some conflicts with meeting schedules, so that's one that I just seem...can't seem to always get to, and I don't want to, you know, have them have a problem because I can't represent the board of selectmen there. So I would like to appoint Richard LaCamera as the regional finance committee representative from the Lakeville Board of Selectmen.
Okay, second?
And I'm doing that as Leah Fabian, selectman, not as the chair.
Second.
Are you interested?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, I mean, both you and John have got a...
Yeah.
A list of current, you know, positions.
Right. And I mean, I do know, you know, he's passionate about a couple of these other things here, as I am too, but there are a couple that, you know, it becomes a lot. So all those in favor of Rich becoming the regional finance committee representative?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So the rest of them, we will wait, and we definitely have to rearrange some of those other ones. Okay, so the second thing on the agenda is a request from Nancy Yates to have the hay fields at Betty's Neck mowed. Nancy?
I have managed the hay fields at Betty's Neck since 2003. At the last selectmen's meeting, it was brought up about a stream of income. I couldn't get Todd. I missed him on Thursday. He only comes in once a week, the town accountant. But I can tell you that probably over $30,000 I've taken in on the hay fields over those years, probably more, and I will get a printout. Two years ago, the farmer who's done the fields, there was a lot of damage, and it wasn't any of the farmer's fault. The previous board of selectmen insisted that the farmer must not have been taking care of the fields, but we had a lot of snowmobile damage and a lot of ATV damage up there, and he wanted to reseed and bring it back because, in all these years, it's been beautiful condition up there. But the damage was not the farmer's fault. He got blamed for it, and they said, "We don't want him to do it anymore." And for the last year, someone mowed the field. I have no idea where the hay went, and I have no...and there was no money deposited into the town of Lakeville. This year, it's a mess. It hasn't been mowed at all. The state has come in. I'm the environmental manager of the APC.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you to tell everyone who you are.
Yes, I am. I'm the environmental manager of the APC. And the woman, Liz Newlands, who works...who's now been appointed at the state level to look at all the conservation restrictions, because we have a conservation restriction to follow up there, and part of it is to keep those fields in good shape. So she's willing to work with us because she wants a farm management plan. So she's willing to work with me, or us, or whatever, and show some examples of other towns that have fields and how they keep them up, and you do a farm management plan, and it's all included in there. The problem with the farmer was that year, two years ago, he didn't want to spend all that money haying that field and have then the board of selectmen kick him out. Because even though I managed a field for all those years, and I have to say, I'm trying not to pat myself on the back, but it looked really nice out there, and then I have people who rarely even go out there telling me something that's not true. So what I would like to do is, just, it's nothing new. I'd just like to go back to the old way, have the farmer come in and cut that down, work on it, which I will bring to the board of selectmen on a farm management plan, so that if he spends money to reseed and fertilize and lime and whatever he wants to do, that he has some kind of an agreement that he won't get kicked out after he spends all that money to bring it back.
Okay.
I'll make a motion since it hasn't been cut and that this farmer's been cutting it for years, and that the town received $2,500, with the understanding that after the first of the year, we discuss the plan...
Okay.
And, you know, maybe give other people the opportunity as well.
Okay.
But since this person has been doing it for, I think, 17 years or somewhere in that area, and it needs to be done, and it needs to be done now, so I would suggest that we do that.
I'll second that, and just the emphasis on going forward. Maybe we need to establish some sort of a contract or bidding or whatever it is.
Right.
But, right, because I was out there, and I did see, you know, that it really needs to be...
Right.
It does need to be done, so if we can just get it cut, and then we can...
Work on it going forward, and if he's going to be the one...whoever does it.
And if he has a contract, then he will feel comfortable reinvesting into the soil and everything there.
Yes.
And we may have to look at all our laws and everything that we do by awarding contracts and everything, so...
Or I could even arrange for the woman from the state, Liz Newlands, to come to a meeting and explain and show other contracts that other towns have.
Have.
Because they hold a conservation restriction, so...
Okay, so I seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is discuss communication between the board of selectmen, other boards and committees, town residents, and employees.
I asked it to be put on the agenda. One of the things that I heard during the election was that the town and the selectmen don't communicate very well with the town residents, the other boards and commissions, and the employees. So I would like to, at the next meeting, have a further discussion on some of the options that, you know, we should look at. And one of the options is to better utilize our website. You know, it's a good website, but it's got to be updated on a regular basis. Understand, you know, the responsibilities of who's supposed to do that. A couple of the things that I'm suggesting that we do is that before each selectmen's meeting, we do an announcement about things that are going on, you know, in town, whether it's a community event, or whether it's a planning board that has a hearing on, you know, island terrace or whatever it happens to be, or marijuana. So people are more aware of what's going on, because we have a habit of just putting it on the town calendar, and people don't realize that, you know, some of these important items need to be addressed. The other thing that I'd like to do is, at every meeting, I'm not keen on doing this, but I think it's important that we do do it right now, so give the people 10 minutes, the opportunity to discuss something that they'd like to bring up, you know, in front[1477.37] So give the people 10 minutes, uh, the opportunity to discuss something that they'd like to bring up, you know, in front of the board. We might not have to make a decision that night, but at least we can get the issue and document the issue and get back to the person.
Is that like anyone from the audience?
Anybody from the audience, yeah. Uh, the third thing I'd like to see us do, um, is set up office hours here at the COA. The selectmen's office hours once a month, probably for an hour. And, uh, we can alternate between the three of us, uh, to do that. And once again, then give people the opportunity to come in and instead of coming to a meeting and, uh, talking to us, to talk to us individual about something that they may be concerned about. So I'd like to discuss that further at the next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I too talked to a lot of people who, you know, I, I think a lot of times for, when you think about every time you hear, it's on the website. It's on the website. It's on the website. It's on the website. If I went to every website every day, I would be spending all my time, you know, looking up things. So you're right. I think if we could streamline some of the website stuff, I also do think that making announcements, to be honest, which I never even thought about that, um, you know, that to make announcements right from here. You know, it's tough to engage folks on social media. I don't know if it's, you know, worth just, there is a couple of pages where people actually post the meetings. Um, I don't know how effective or not they are, but, um, I would like to, that's kind of a great idea to me. So I, uh.
Leah, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
So what we have on the, um, Facebook page that Lorraine set up was, um, we have analytics. And it lets us know how many people looked at this post, how many people, uh, you know, scrolled past it, how many people clicked on it. So we can see the efficacy of whatever we post on there. So we can see, like, you know, I'd make one post and it got 100 people looking at it. And then I made one post last week that had, you know, 5,000 people look at it. So we can see.
Well, the thing is on the Facebook page, we want to make sure that this is only informational.
Right, and not response.
We're not going to respond to it.
Yes, so you can turn off, you can turn off commenting.
If they have a specific request, they can send an email to you and, uh, you can either adjust the concern or bring it back to the board.
Throw my number out there and get lots of calls.
Yeah. Um, once, just one second, Mark, because I just want to fit my train of thought. Um, and I do agree too with office hours. I actually try to get here on Fridays for coffee. And I find a lot of folks, if you're, you know, if you put yourself out there, will talk. I know people, different selectmen have had different experiences with trying to, you know, have information sessions. But I do know that, you know, um, Representative Oral has office hours here and Senator Rodriks has office hours here. And I do know that people do approach them. So, um, I, I guess I would really agree with liking to see this on the next agenda so we can develop that further and, and have a conversation about that. Um, Mark.
Mark Knox, Pierce Ave. Just as a suggestion, I think it's a great idea and it's a good discussion. A lot of people do rely on Lake Cam to watch the, uh, the meetings afterwards. What if you did something just informationally where, I hate to call it an infomercial, but maybe a two-minute little thing where somebody from the town offices just did a quick little, this is what's upcoming in the next week or two. Because people do watch it and it might be a good thing before a meeting that people would see, oh, I'm watching yesterday's meeting, but this is coming up.
Well, that's kind of what I'm talking about, Mark, because we're right now and we're going to talk about the agendas and the meetings.
Yeah, a lot of, I think what's out there now is the social media and the website.
Don't talk about our website, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the Lake Cam thing, it was just, it's one more way to just throw it out there. If somebody could just record something for two minutes with them.
Right before.
On a weekly basis. This is coming up at the planning board meeting. This is coming up at the Board of Health, you know, if you're interested. Nothing, just informational, like you're saying.
Right. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to have the town administrator at every meeting give a report. Just to things that are going on and things that, good things that we've done and bad things that we haven't done.
There'll be very few of those.
You know, to, for her to, because if we only meet every two weeks and, you know, she comes in and.
Yeah.
It's tough for her to get the board up to date on a lot of things, as you probably see.
Managing three people.
From the planning board. Uh, so, you know, we're going to do that as well.
That's great.
Um, you know, that, that kind of, again, like, uh, uh, not because it's the work or whatever, but, you know, I know the things that I do really well, but I don't necessarily know what John's dealings with the veterans group because he represents that group, you know, what, now Rich will be taking over the regional finance committee, so. And because of the open meeting law, we never want to, you know, whatever. So I can't just call him up and say, hey, let's talk, you know, whatever. So we would either have to get ourselves in front of, you know, Maureen or the town administrator or actually at a meeting is the proper place. So I think it would be really nice going forward if we, you know, if we could have that kind of information so that we all know what's going on in our own.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's great.
But I, I agree. I actually, I don't know if you, um, no, you, did you notice that Jose recorded the results from the election? And I was like, you know what? That's probably less than seven minute, but I bet a lot of people are going to watch it. You know, because people want to know what's going on. So, you know, so I, I do agree. Maybe we can talk to Jose too about.
But like I said, I just think a lot of people use that for the follow-up after the meeting.
Yep.
Knowing that they're watching, if something could go on Lake Cam free, just, you know, informationally ahead of the time. So people might attend. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
No, it sounds good. Yep. Um, do you want to do the next one or do you want me to take the?
Uh, I just, I want to make an announcement.
Okay. Oh, God.
I'd like to thank the Historical Commission for the Veterans Day observance yesterday.
Oh.
And the ASAWOP students for putting out all those flags to say thank you to our veterans. So.
Yeah, that was really nice. Yeah, that was nice.
Great. Thank you. Oh, it looks like.
I, I wanted to address the last item. Uh, I, I agree with, with Mark, uh, about using Lake Cam. Uh, I think social media has, you know, wonderful possibilities and it works well sometimes, but I think it can be problematic. And shutting the comments might, might be a good way to do it. But what I would like to throw into that mix of using Lake Cam. If someone's going to do, um, a report, if you will, ahead of time, uh, you know, however brief you want to make it, I'm sure Lake Cam will schedule a time certain every single week where it can be broadcast and people will know when to expect it. Of course, you know, you're putting it on Vimeo and they can watch it anytime they want as well. I, I really think that's a, a good idea.
Okay. Well, I mean, maybe what we do is we ask Jose to come in and speak with us and then I'm sure he and Maureen can put something together. Yes, Brian Day.
Uh, Brian Day, I'll respond. Rich, congratulations.
Thank you, Brian.
Um, I definitely support what you guys have said about the communication efforts as well as Mr. Knox and Bob have said. Uh, additionally, I'd say one of the things that I heard in the campaign as well is that things like this meeting are often difficult to attend. Five o'clock, five o'clock, three o'clock.
We're going to discuss that further.
All right, excellent. So, you know, whether it's office hours or this meeting or other town meetings, I mean, five o'clock, a lot of folks are just getting out of work. So if we can even just rotate them so they're different days, you know, different days of the week, different time, maybe a Saturday here and there, even though I know it's more burdensome for other folks. I think that would be much more appreciated so additional people can get here and speak their mind.
Yeah, I, I agree with that too. Um, okay. Yeah, I think, um, at, that was just a conversation. No votes to be taken on that. So right now we are going to take, um, Chief O'Brien and the, and his appointment out of order. So Chief.
I'd like to thank the, the board for, for taking me out of order and thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to introduce, uh, Gordon. Gordon Crawford, come on. Uh, Gordon is six years' experience in EMS, working, uh, right now for E's Care. He's finishing paramedic school, uh, is classing portion of paramedic school in November. And he's applied for, uh, employment as a qualified fighter for the Town of Lakeville. And I, I'd like to recommend that we appoint him to, to that position.
Okay.
I would like to mention we appoint, it's a good one.
I second, um, any conversation or just at this point pending all whatever.
Pending a physical examination.
Kind of one-year probationary period.
Of physical abilities test with a one-year probationary period.
I'm just waiting on the results.
Okay.
So I'm just waiting on the results for the.
Okay, okay. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you, Mark.
Chief.
It's all right.
Chief. Um, okay. Number four, we have discussed agendas and minutes of the Board of Selectmen.
You again?
You again.
I think, um, first of all, talking about the minutes, you know, one of the problems that we have is that the minutes aren't, uh, updated regularly. And I think as far as the Board of Selectmen is concerned, that this meeting here, the minutes ought to be available the following, uh, meeting on November 25th, so we can approve it. A lot of people, you know, look at our agendas and look at our minutes and look at Lake Cam, you know, as well. And I think it's important that we have it out there. And I know that the, uh, the planning board with Marcus on and some of the other committees, they do their minutes and they're out there for the next meeting, you know, to be approved. And not all boards, you know, are doing that. And so we need to look at the options, as I talked to Maureen about that today, uh, about the options of helping the other boards get their minutes up on the, on the rep website on a regular basis. Uh, because, you know, some of it hasn't been out there for a long time.
Yeah, and 30 days is the open meeting law standard.
Meeting law says we're supposed to have the minutes done and approved within 30 days. So, you know, which means that we probably need to talk about responsibilities.
Right.
You know, I don't know if it's Tracy, I don't know if it's the town clerk or a combination, you know, thereof, uh, to make sure that they get updated on a regular basis.
And we'll have a plan going forward for anyone that seems to be struggling with compliance.
Yeah.
Yep. And, and I mean, struggling maybe, you know, isn't the, I've done the job. And it's just sometimes, you know, there's so much to do for some of these boards that that's the easiest one to get, to put aside, you know?
And Madam Chair, if I can, we also had a dedicated secretary to a lot of these boards up until last year.
Right.
And that made, you know, a big difference. We don't have that now. We could look into doing that again where we would hire someone per diem or per, um, to take those notes for some of the boards that are.
I think we definitely will need help in that department just to keep everything current. Because that is another thing, you know, I mean, this, this, this last election, there's really is a lot to be learned from it. And, you know, people are, are, people are always paying attention. Sometimes they're vocal about it, sometimes they're not. But that is one, you know, common theme was that, well, where are the minutes? Where are the minutes? You know? So we can work towards that. The only suggestion I have too, though, is, um, even just because I did the minutes for the Board of Assessors for, I think, almost three years. And I always tried to get someone to do them if I knew I was going to be out. Because it's almost like you don't even think of.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's like you're, you're just going along doing your thing and then you, you know, you're, I knew I was going to be away and now all of a sudden my minutes are.
Yeah.
You know, so if we know we're going to have someone who's out or whatever, maybe we can have that person.
That's a great idea.
Sit in to take, even though that person may still be there, that way they don't have the minutes sitting on their desk.
And sometimes we've got great coverage by Lake Cam. And, um, if we know Lake Cam's covering that meeting, we could just make sure we have someone that can transcribe after.
Yeah.
And it makes, that makes it easy. Like sometimes Tracy's missed some meetings and she's been able to catch up by, you know, going on Lake Cam and getting it and taking the notes off there.
And, you know, again, like, um, I, I totally, actually, we should have had it on this agenda, the one set of minutes that I couldn't get through the last time to approve it. Um, but the Board of, some of these boards, like the planning, most planning board meetings go almost two, three hours sometimes. That's a lot of information, you know, and, uh, like, I know the Board of Assessors, sometimes we were in and out in less than 40 minutes. That's, you know, a much simpler task than trying to get three hours of information down. So.
Well, also, you know, there's different philosophies on how they're going to take the minutes. Some people are really pretty verbatim and detailed. And other people, yeah, other people just like the votes. Yeah, they like the votes. They don't add any of the color.
Right.
If we could just get someone to, you know, capture what the votes were and some of the limited discussion, I think that would go a long way to being a more efficient way of capturing it. And then we are, like I said, very fortunate that we can fall back and say, if anyone really wanted a verbatim accounting of everything that happened, most likely they can get it.
Right.
On Lake Cam, but we should be able to get them, at least the votes that happened in the order that they happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, Bob Marshall for Barstow Street. One of the things that, I, I serve on the Cable Advisory Committee and one of the things I was discussing with Maureen not long ago, um, we have a meeting that we had back in September sometime. But we're waiting for important information to come forward before we can meet with Comcast to begin negotiations. And that largely because of the election and, and some, uh, personnel, um, uh, issues at, at Lake Cam, uh, they haven't been able to get to the, give us that information. Therefore, it's been now a couple of months since we last met. And if the 30 days is a compliance issue, do we meet just to approve minutes?
I can speak to that if you'd like.
I would think, uh, I, I wouldn't want to call a meeting just to approve minutes.
No, and it does have a reasonable, and if you're in a reasonable time, I know I had the same problem when I was on the, um, the rent control board. We met twice a year. So it wasn't, we wouldn't do that there. So it's reasonable. Yeah.
So the, uh, the other area has to do with the agendas. You know, as an example, I mean, our agenda was put up Thursday afternoon.
Yep.
So that means that people were not aware that we were going to have a meeting until Thursday afternoon. What we need to do is that we're talking to talk about dates, you know, future dates. We need to at least put out on the town calendar that we're going to have a meeting on November 25th. We're going to have one on, I think it's December 9th and so forth. I know it doesn't have the agenda, but at least it has the dates out there that we're going to have a meeting. And I know the planning board does that.
Yeah, they do it a year in advance.
They do it a year in advance.
We do post all our dates, but the meetings were always the same thing. I don't think they put it. They don't put it on the town calendar until about three days in advance.
Before, right.
But to a point I agree, post that the meeting is going to happen. You can post out the whole year.
Right.
And amend it if a, a meeting got canceled or changed from a holiday.
So I think we need to look at that for all the boards to say, hey, you know, okay, at least a month in advance as to when your meetings are going to be. So people are aware of it because they go there, go to the website.
Right.
Go to the website and look and look at the town calendar. It says, we don't have any meetings in December right now.
Right now, right, right. And we, and we really should. We should be, you know, did you want to?
Once again, I talked to Maureen on that and we should.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair, back when I used to do the calendars and the whole website, I used to do that for the selectmen's meeting. I would post them as soon as they were scheduled. I would post them on the calendar. But I don't do the calendar anymore. So, um, I can start just going in and doing.
Well, I think we just need to work.
It's just.
We need to work on that together to figure out what needs to be done.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a suggestion to the minutes thing?
Sure.
I think most boards do, uh, subscribe to Robert's Rules Order.
Yes.
And they have some good examples and some more concise versions of Robert's Rules that give you kind of templates for minutes. And they do cut out a lot of the verbatim stuff and they just say, and I just suggestion to the Board of Selectmen, make a requirement for the minutes for all boards. It's a little simplified. Because they do have Lake Cam on most meetings to refer back to. If you wanted to get the discussion, put a note in there, see discussion, Lake Cam, meeting, whatever. And just have the motion, the second, and the point of discussion.
Little discussion.
Very little. Abbreviate the discussion. To, you know, maybe you don't get all the abutters comments, but.
Right.
The engineer made a few good points on, on whatever, but abbreviate discussion so that it's easier to put a typed minute out within 30 days.
And the other thing is too.
But for you to have a standard, that all boards follow.
The open meeting law also has standards in it that we can look at.
And I did send that out to all the boards about a month and a half ago.
There's three meetings. They allow three meetings before you're sort of almost in violation of.
No, but I mean, for taking minutes, uh, Mark, you know, there is some.
And I did send that out, um, I think it was a month and a half ago.
But yeah, again, you know, for, again, I can speak to the Board of Assessors because I was on that board for four years. Sometimes we would come in, we would have one piece of business and then we would go into executive session to talk about abatement. So that's not public because it deals with people's finances, whatever. Those minutes is like number one, number two, number three, and then go to executive session. But again, planning board is one that is, you know, so much information. Yeah.
I'm the secretary a lot. She does two boards.
Right, yeah. Board of Selectmen.
Both EBA and planning board.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I speak to this?
Sure.
Last Friday was my 20th year here, um, for the towns. Thank you. And I also worked for the Midboro Planning Board as well for several years as their night secretary. And I do understand the, the need to slice the minutes a little bit. However, if I cannot count on my hands and both feet double times, how many times I've had a selectman come to me and say, well, what did we say? What, get me the discussion on this. Um, and actually, sometimes I actually would go back to the minutes and post, copy and paste the select, the minutes into the selectmen's agenda pack for them to see exactly what was said, what they did, what the discussion was from the previous time that they did this. Um, to have to tell a selectman, well, you know, I got one line a minute of discussion in here, you need to go watch Lake Cam. They're going to say, um, no, you need to go watch Lake Cam. Well, I personally don't have time to go through years of meetings and try to pick out, you know, okay, well, I gotta watch and rewind and fast forward and watch and rewind and fast forward. It's, and Nancy can attest to this because she's one of the ones that has asked me for minutes. So there does need to be some discussion. Um, I can't tell you how many times Rita and I have gone to our minute book for a refresher of what actually happened.
I agree. In all boards, I see them go back.
Yes, and so the discussion is, um, even I'm a member of the Midboro Planning Board now. Sometimes we'll go back to my minutes to see what actually happened. We had another planning board member that didn't, or she didn't do the minutes that way. And, you know, I'd be reading them going, well, what happened? What, what did you guys discuss? So there's a fine line. You gotta have a happy medium, but there does need to be a discussion. I've had residents complain because they came up and testified about something and I was told to slash all the residents' comments out of the minutes. So now that's the backside of it. I have residents saying, well, I've talked about this. Where is it in the minutes? Well, I was told to take it out. So it's, it's a fine line and.
Right. It is supposed to be an accurate representation.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be word for word, but if there is a conversation between the selectmen, back and forth with this person making points and, and they base a vote on that discussion, then that should probably be reflected. If the selectmen base a vote based on a conversation. So this, I have actually cut the minutes down a lot, um, from how I previously was doing them.
For the Board of Selectmen.
Yes. Um, sometimes I actually kept my original notes because it was a slash job of the final minutes. Because I didn't feel comfortable everything I was told to remove. So, you know, there is a fine line and we'll work on it and figure it out and.
Yeah, happy medium. Yeah.
Happy medium.
Yeah, I, I just think that it's, you know, as long as it seems like we're trying to make everything so much more available that we should just try to work, work it all out here. Yes, Mr. Day.
Thank you. Um, one of the things I find useful now that Lake Cam is putting these things on Vimeo and YouTube and such, is that you can typically, as the, the author of content, go back and add bookmarks for topics discussed. Here's where this vote took place, here's where this vote took place. And then kind of in the description it says timestamp, blah. I mean, to me, that's super helpful because I don't only just want to hear the verbatim discussion, but also see people's body language, how they react to things.
Right.
It would, to me, it would make it much more useful. Uh, on the calendar side of things, I've been trying to keep up better with the calendar. One of the things I find as a resident that it's difficult to use is that I can't synchronize it with any of my devices or such. And typically if I can synchronize it and just see it next to my personal schedule, I know, okay, cool, I can participate in this one, I can't in this one. So I don't know what we use for technology providers. Happy to provide any guidance or assistance here if we can. And to make it something that's just more easier to, to access so that you know that when you edit it, everybody that's subscribed is going to have that update right away.
Madam Chair, I could speak to that.
Okay.
Um, when we purchased the new website, it was between two companies, um, Virtuals Town and Schools and Civic Plus. We went with Virtual Town and School. However, their platform is not edible. Um, we did not have any leeway and features on how we wanted it to. I advocated the Civic Plus, which was a more expensive product, but we could have customized it to what we want. Um, I know I get a lot of emails from people wanting to subscribe to the calendar to get meeting updates. It's not possible with the software. Um, it's a package. We bought it. And, um, you know, you can subscribe to a lot of different things, but getting notifications every time a meeting is posted on the calendar is not doable.
That answers that question.
Not doable now.
Now.
Perhaps it's something we can reopen and look at.
Well, I was, right, I was going to say, I don't think anyone wants to talk about buying any new software, website, whatever. But we will put it on, um, we will definitely put it on our to-do list.
IT strategy.
Yeah, IT strategy. Okay. All right. Um, that was it for that, minutes. Um, next thing, I think, um, Rich has some. Next thing, I think Rich has some comments on town website responsibilities.
Yeah, I think that we need to understand, you know, who's responsible to update what on the website. Some of it is updated regularly, some of it is not updated on a regular basis, so we need to get our hands around that. And I talked to Maureen about that, you know, as well, that to make some adjustments so we understand who's supposed to do what. And that's all I'm saying about that.
Yeah.
Can we make improvements to the website? Absolutely.
Yep, but I mean, these are all, yeah, no, I'm just saying that these are all things that, you know, we really should be working on.
Yeah, one of the things that, that is on the website is you can subscribe, you know, to the website and that brings up, are you familiar with that, Brian? It brings up a whole list of stuff. And it's pretty good, actually.
I do, too.
And it's, it's really a nice feature. We need to promote that better to get more people involved in it. I believe, I think somebody told me there was like 500 now, I don't know, somewhere around that, maybe more.
Could be more.
Okay, could be more. She's not going to answer that question. So that's a nice feature.
Yeah, we can make sure that whenever we have events, or even when you guys are doing your, your one-on-one sit downs and you're having your office.
Yep.
I mean, you could just casually mention it and we'll have, I think we had said that we should probably include it with our tax bills.
Yeah, so people can get more involved and they can get more information.
Yep.
Because one of the problems that, you know, the town clerk has to deal with and Tracy has to deal with is that we get all these requests for minutes and agendas and stuff like that, and that's time consuming too. And if that information was available, you know, out on the website on a regular basis, we could eliminate that, we could refer them to the website and get the, the minutes and the agendas, I mean, the minutes and the agendas of the meetings.
Yep, and we can promote it.
Anything to cut back on a lot of paper that we create.
We do just want to be careful not to overuse our email blast service where we send out the announcements. We don't want it to be so commonplace that people just ignore the content that's going out there. Again, happy medium when it comes to that stuff, but.
Maureen gave me an example last week that, see, away, we don't have any van drivers, oh, no, we don't have any, we needed new van drivers.
Meals on Wheels.
Meals on Wheels, excuse me. And so she, they sent it out, right? They got 40 responses.
Yep.
That's terrific.
Which was, you know, 10 times greater than the last time we sent it out.
So that's great. So these people now, it's voluntary, well, they get paid a small slip or anything.
A mileage.
Miles or something like that. But, you know, there's an example of it working, you know.
And then how many actually showed up after phone calling and saying they were coming in, probably?
There were, we did get a lot, but that also, actually, I think the driving force on that was Facebook because I put it on the Town of Lakeville page and I put it on Lakeville Helping Lakeville, and they got droves of people coming in from that.
Great, great, okay. All right, thank you.
Next, discuss the FY '20 budget and revenue projections and issues with the budget.
I'm a finance guy, was on the Finance Committee for 16 years. So I'd like to get a monthly report. And if the rest of the board doesn't want it, that's okay, that shows actual versus budget. And the same thing as far as revenue projections. I know that this is done by the accounting office, you know, on a regular basis. So, and then we're coming up to budget season now, and I'd like to know if there's any issues, you know, with the existing budget that we need to address because, you know, six months goes by pretty quick. And if we're having a serious problems in the area, then we need to look at that.
Yeah, want to go over that individually when we go through the budget?
It's up to you if the, if the, if the board wants the review. I would say that if we have a budget problem, in a specific, you know, the fire department's overtime or something like that is a problem, then we should be aware of that.
Now.
Now, so we can, you know, we got to fix that.
I too would like to receive a once a month report. It's been a little bit difficult for me to be getting that. And Todd will print it for me, but I usually have to go right to his office, so.
Is it not getting sent to your email or is it because of the size of the file?
I actually want a hand copy, I want a hard copy. So I don't know how you want to receive it, but I would love it if once a month we could have a hard copy.
Put it around your box.
Yeah, that would be great. I like to look at, that's what's right here.
You know, not at a very, very detailed.
All right, let me see if I can like that, export it.
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, that would be, that would be good. And I don't know if maybe towards the other point for the FY '21 budget, I have had a couple folks call me and say, I'm a little nervous about budget season for various reasons. So maybe we can just send some kind of a, I don't know, or save it for the, I don't know when the next department head meeting is, and just say, you know, if anyone wants to talk about a budget early or wants help or, you know, anything like that.
Okay, so last staff meeting that went over, we went over just the capital and it's planning for the next one to have budgets?
Yep.
Because that's just the timeline that it goes on.
You know, the one thing about Rita as a town administrator was she was a budget person.
Sure.
And I think folks, you know, always had confidence that if they overlooked something, she would catch it right away. So, you know, this is all new for all of us here. We're almost a whole new board here, we're, you know, whatever. So just, you know, on a low, low key, anyone needs help with their budget.
And I know some department heads have reached out to me already.
Yep.
And looking for a little guidance and we can help them with that.
So that would be, you know, that would be great because I don't want anyone to, you know, worry silently that, that what they're turning in isn't, you know, so just got to get it done.
Sure.
Okay, anything else on that?
I assume you're talking about item number seven?
Item, yes, number seven, yep.
I think that at that next meeting, we ought to discuss the fiscal '21 budget to get the process going. I think the past few years, I think the town has waited too long to get the budget process moving and, you know, that a lot of people, you know, were saying that, you know, we go to town meeting and we show the town meeting and then we get the budget.
Do you have a date? Do you want to start?
So I would, I would say we'd like to get the letter together to go to the department heads that say, we're in the process of doing, you know, fiscal '21 and the board should discuss, discuss what the parameters of that budget, you know, should be. And that we should have the budget back from each of the department heads and delay it in the end of January. It actually says that in the Bible.
Yeah, so, so what the plan was on my little calendar is December 1st to send out that letter, but, and it is the end of January, I believe, to get it back, but.
And the board, you might want to have the board discuss, you know, how we feel. I mean, I know how I feel about the budget. And I've already looked at, you know, the budget that we're in and some of the revenue projections for '21 and I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah.
Because there was some one-time revenues that were used in 2020's budget, which I, you know, discussed with you.
And I have that budget worksheet that I was talking to you about today that plug all that in.
So the board should just say, okay, just go out and do it. We should have some guidelines as to what we should do. So if you can delay it until the, the meeting on the 7th or whatever.
Plus, I'm not opposed to marathon meetings. Sometimes you just need to get business done, however late it goes into the evening, but, you know, having experienced my first sort of budget cycle last year, some nights we actually had four department heads at one meeting and that, that's a lot of, you know, I don't know if that's the way it's traditionally been done, maybe it was not overwhelming, but maybe it was, seemed like a lot to me because I've never done it before, but I just, you know.
It's just hard to coordinate all those schedules.
Yeah.
And that's why you end up having a bulk of like.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, some departments are actually smaller than others, so maybe we can knock out, you know, some earlier, later, whatever, but just looking at the schedule.
Maureen and I were working up a couple scenarios about, you know, trying to get people together on a, on a smoother basis instead of the, the big spikes.
Yep.
And it, but it does, it comes all down to that availability issue that seems to stymie us.
Yep, and, and I mean, I do want to give each committee, each department head, you know, their time to speak. I, I learned so much last year from the Cemetery Commission folks. I, I was just in awe at how much I learned in such a short amount of time. So I definitely want people, you know, to be able to have their time to say, you know, but again, you know, some of those meetings were, you know, we were here till nine, nine 30, 10 o'clock, you know, so.
Well, the best way is to make sure that I have them prepared ahead of time so they're discussing the relevant stuff and, you know, leaving the rest out because I know it ends up getting involved and then we get a, we get a history lesson and then something goes on. But yeah, so preparing them ahead of time to be able to come to speak to you in a manner where they're actually addressing your concerns and then we can get to what your concerns are and then you're all on the same page. That cuts downtime.
Yep.
And then the other thing is revenue projections. You need to work with Todd and the accountant to work with the revenue projections for fiscal '21. It's not that difficult, you know, to do. But one of the key factors is the state aid, but we don't get a ton of local state aid anyways. All the school money goes to the region, so it's just pretty much a lot of money and maybe a few other things, so.
And this year we'll have those, whatever the revenue is from the, from the room, from the, I want to say Airbnb, but it's not Airbnb, it's any type of, yeah, we'll have that additional.
Because it includes all of them.
We haven't had that yet. We don't know what it is. We don't think, yeah, we don't think it'll be much, but it, that'll be, you know.
Yeah, and I think last year we, not over projected because we're, I think we're within the, the budget here. We're not, but we were a little generous.
Optimistic?
Optimistic, yeah. And it made me a little bit nervous, but again, you know, as the newbie on the board, I, I, you know, I really did defer to, again, Rita's expertise, Nancy's expertise on, on those numbers.
Rather conservative and over deliver.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, next up, we have the capital plan, update to the capital plan.
Yeah, Maureen and I talked about that today and I'm going to get a copy of the original, I believe I have it somewhere, of the original capital plan policy and procedure that the town has used. And actually going back to the appointees of one of the things that needs to be done is a member of the Board of Selectmen need to be appointed, you know, to the capital plan committee. So the next meeting, we should discuss that, you know, how we go about deployment as a town administrator, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee member, and I think two members at large.
Yeah, I think the moderator gets to appoint two at-large members.
We get that process going, so.
I already spoke with Katie Goodfellow a couple weeks ago and she's on board.
So we can get that done by the end of January as well, so we know who's there.
Yeah, now, I, I talked to her last week and the moderator is not appointed. The moderator appoints two at-large.
Correct.
So do we, so she decides how she wants people to do that, correct?
So I'll work with her, whether she asks for write-in or if she has some type of, you know, plan.
Yeah, and just for the sake of everyone at home, the capital plan folks kind of look at all the capital things and make suggestions as to what the selectmen should or shouldn't, whatever, decide to spend capital monies on, whether it's.
Anything over $10,000.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then number nine is process for union negotiations.
Well, we have three contracts that are up, police, fire, and.
Laborers.
Laborers, thank you. One more thing.
Police, fire, what?
Laborers.
Laborers Union. And we've already received a letter from Laborers Union asking us to meet, to negotiate. I would like to see us send a letter to the fire union and the police union telling them that we're ready to, to meet with them to negotiate as well. So at the next meeting, we should discuss the process that, you know, the board wants to go through, is going to be part of our negotiations and so forth, so we'll put that back on the agenda for the 25th.
Okay. Some more specifics on that one. Okay, number 10, discuss and vote to schedule the hearing to set the FY '20 tax rate. So I believe everything is in, new growth figures are in?
Everything has been submitted and we are waiting for the numbers back.
Okay.
So the L 13 and L 3 are all in and all the miscellaneous reports, those went in last Friday.
Yep. So, you know, the reason why I really didn't want this to wait is because, you know, we have to print the tax bills and get them out to everyone and that's not really, you know, something that we should wait until the last possible moment because it is a lot of work. So that's, that hearing, I'd like to make a motion to actually have that hearing on November 25th as long as everything comes back in okay. I don't know if we can set a time for it. We have to, but we will have to make sure that.
Five o'clock.
Yep, the assessors are here with us and, so I make that motion to actually have the tax classification here, oh, to have the hearing on the FY '20 tax rate on November 25th at.
Five o'clock.
I, I would like to see that tax, if we're going to have the, if we're going to have a selectmen's meeting on, on that day, okay, I'd like to see the tax hearing moved up to later in our agenda.
I have already advertised the tax hearing.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, so at five o'clock.
Second.
I think I said.
Okay, second. All those in favor of setting that tax rate hearing on November 25th?
Aye.
So what we have on here right now is discuss scheduling Board of Selectmen meetings for November and December. I know there is a couple of things, so. Hold on, I'm trying to get there. So tentatively, what we have is November 25th, December 9th, and December 30th. December 30th is a Monday night, but that one's kind of important because we have all the licenses, correct?
I'm going to try to have as many of the licenses as I can on the December 9th meeting, but ultimately I always have stragglers that never meet the deadlines and so they would have to be cleaned up on December 30th.
Okay, I mean, I have no problem with these dates.
I don't have a problem with the dates, but I, I think as, as Brian has pointed out, that, you know, I think that the times, we have to look at the times and I don't know how they came up at five o'clock, but.
It was just what their schedules.
Whatever.
Yeah.
You know, I certainly could meet at five o'clock, that's not a problem. But the problem that you run into is, well, somebody else could have got elected and they said, oh, jeez, I can't get there at five o'clock, I'm working. And I think a lot of people would not be able to make a five o'clock meeting. So my suggestion would be that we go to 6:30 for the regular scheduled meeting. And if we have an executive session, we do it prior to the regular meeting at 6:00 as a suggestion. We don't have to, but I'm just throwing that out.
Yep, so November 25th, we know we have the hearing at five o'clock, so it's not much we can do to change that one. So let's just vote to have that just for formality, so make a motion to have a meeting on November 25th, five o'clock.
Okay.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll definitely do that one. Now, I would like John's input on time because he was one of the ones that, you know, wanted it all summer long and through the fall to be earlier. I'm okay with 6:30.
Okay, we can wait.
Yeah, if, you know, I, I'm okay with 6:00, I'm okay with 6:30. I do want to give folks a chance to get to the meetings and I know, you know, a lot of people can't make it at the 5:00 and we really need to be respectful of that. of that, but, so we will, um, schedule those two dates and maybe on the 25th, we can just confirm the time, okay?
One more point, ma'am chair. I didn't know if you wanted to incorporate anything Brian had said about either switching the day up or, or if we want to have the consistency, because, I mean, there's two schools of thought there. Um, some people will never be able to make it because it is Monday night, but some people rely on it being on a Monday night, so I didn't know if you guys had any thoughts about that.
I, I would say we stick with the Monday, Brian, and the reason why is consistent, people know that it's, and the other problem we have around here is that we don't have much meeting space available, so we're always in, could always be in conflict with other committees, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I think for the time being that we ought to do it on Monday night, it's not, it doesn't make a difference to me.
Yep. Um, but I do really like that idea, especially when, um, sometimes there is some things that come up that, you know, people are really, um, very much so interested in and for specific things, I would certainly say I can make myself available if everyone wants to do something on a Saturday, depending on, you know, like a case-by-case basis. But I actually do like the planning board meeting because their schedule, how they set it, because I know it's always going to be on a Thursday night and I try to get there and, or, you know, I know it's going to be on Thursday, so I try to watch it the next day. I kind of like the consistency of the same day, but I am in no way opposed to having, like, special meetings at different times to try to accommodate, you know, people's schedules, um, you know, whether it's conversations about budgets or whatever. And actually, that would be great for people to let us know if they feel as though, you know, that's something that's important to them.
And if we have presentations, we can do a better job at, you know, maybe making a presentation, like a budget presentation.
Yep.
On a Saturday or something where people could attend.
I agree, yep, I agree. Yes.
Ma'am chair, Maureen, could I ask you please to speak up?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a little hoarse today, I apologize. I was just saying that sometimes when we have special meeting, meetings like budget meetings or anything like that, um, where we're going through the budget narrative and we're trying to educate the public, we could probably do a better job at maybe having those on a weekend and having people that might not regularly be able to attend, attend.
I do think too, office hours will help. I think, you know, a lot of folks, and again, I'm not opposed to, you know, I have a very flexible schedule and I, I wouldn't even mind doing nighttime office hours to, you know, and some, I think sometimes that can be very well attended because people know they can come in, ask their question and, you know, and leave, so.
Yeah, and we'll have space for you guys to do that in the next month or two.
Yeah, that would be great, yep. Okay, so, we have the one meeting definite, the other two dates tentative, and we will confirm a time. Is there any new business?
Yes, I, I would like to, uh, ask the owner of the Lakeville Hospital, uh, we're hearing rumors and, uh, reading some of the newspaper as to what's going on over there. So, I would like us to invite him in. The last time he gave the town an update was two years ago.
Isn't enough to die.
So, uh, I think it's important because that's going to be a potential major development here in town, depending upon what's going to go there. I know that some of the lots have been sold and so you hear various things, so I, that's okay, but I'm really concerned about the hospital itself, you know, that needs to be addressed.
Absolutely, we do that.
Yep, um, I think the last time any board got any kind of an update, well, I shouldn't say that, was the board of assessors, um, and that was in the spring of 2018, so I, I think it would be a good idea to ask.
We can ask.
For an update, so maybe we can do that.
Um, the other thing that I'd, I'd like an update on is that, you know, we have six marijuana host agreements that have been signed. And, um, I'd like to know the status of where they are, uh, what their projected, you know, revenue is supposed to be. Um, at the last board of selectmen's meeting, Tricon, I guess?
Tricon, yep.
Came in and asked for the name change of their company, which is okay from a marketing standpoint, but in the same breath, they said, well, we're not, we're no longer going to do cultivation, okay? So, that means that that host agreement that was signed maybe should be modified to remove that from their host agreement. I know they want to do retail, but I think it's time to get an update on all of them as to where they are. Now, he said the reason why he did that was because he didn't have the capital, to put that project quote. Um, I think we should have known about that if he didn't have the capital, you know, before we signed the host agreement.
I think it was a couple of years ago that we signed it, where this has been multiple years of waiting, so I think people's financial situations in the preceding time has kind of.
You know, probably should have, you know.
Yeah.
Signed the host agreement for a year.
When we entered into the freeze a few months back, I had suggested that we actually, again, still being new, um, we take a look at the actual host community agreement and just review, is it working for us? Is it, you know, and I was told that, you know, this wasn't the time for that, so I didn't push the, you know.
Yes, nothing has opened or changed, so I could see where that would be difficult to ascertain if anything's working, but yeah.
Yeah, it's just, um, I do, you know, there has been a couple of things that have changed, so, um, you know, again, like with, you know, Rich's feeling here, I feel like, um, there have been some things that have happened, you know, we weren't billing for legal reimbursements that we were entitled to bill, but I do believe we have been billed, so I, I would just really like to see an overall update to, um, you know, because we, you know, we, the players have changed now in the board of selectmen, so I really do think that, you know, we owe it to ourselves to be up to date.
We have all that.
And I thank Maureen for actually billing them because they hadn't been billed and we're allowed to bill them for legal fees, which, I don't know what they are, to, to have them hit, but I'm sure it's thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it's like up to $5,000 per.
Per.
Yeah, and we don't know what the per is.
Yeah.
Was it per year?
Per year, per.
Contract?
Per, right, right.
At least now that we've, we've billed them to get the money back. And then the other question is that, you know, in the contracts, there's supposed to be a $50,000 mitigation fee, I believe is what it's called when they open, so, and I know, I don't know where the one, um, the most recent one that I think is growing already.
Yes, they're growing, plants are in the ground, we haven't seen any revenue or anything from them, but plants went in the ground over the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, and then, um, we're getting estimates of maybe a spring opening for Monroe Brothers.
Which is the retail.
And then even further down the line for anyone else.
Well, you know, I have, I have a lot of concerns about this in general because I think that the industry is completely up in the air. Uh, you know, in California, they have tons of people growing marijuana, they can't sell it because they don't have, the towns aren't allowing retail stores, you know, to be there and, and the prices are fluctuating, you know, up and down, it's, it's ridiculous, so I think we just need an update as to what's going on, you know? I mean, if they're not going to do it or they are going to do it, I think the town needs to know about it and if they're not going to do it, then we need to get rid of that host agreement because they'll turn around and sell that host agreement to somebody else.
Somebody else, so.
And we don't want that to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Anyways.
We'll do, we'll get that going.
Um, yeah, and, and I mean, I, I appreciate everyone's work in advance because, you know, this is a lot of stuff that we're going to be working through and I know it's a lot of work and I know there already is a lot of work going on at Town Hall and, um, so.
If we can't do all of those by next meeting, that's, that's okay.
I thought you said that's not okay.
No, you know, I mean, more than the rest of the majority of them, but I understand, you know, you just, you can't, you know, do everything, you know? I understand how it should be those.
Yeah, no, I do, I absolutely understand, yep.
So, we can put priorities together and decide.
We'll get it, you know, usable space.
Um, so, yes.
I was just going to make a comment, perhaps the board would be interested in hearing, I think at the presentation for the hospital a couple of years ago, my memory could be foggy by now, but the indication was any profits from the sales of the residential lots is going to go towards the cleanup of the hospital itself. Perhaps you'd like to ask how much of that actually went into cleanup so far?
None.
Yeah, so why?
Agreed, that's why I want to ask them what's going on. The other, the other problem is that there's a landfill on that property, that DEP has said that they need to clean up. Okay, you, you made money on these lots, clean it up, you know? So, he came in and did a big presentation about what he was going to do, you know, he was going to do engineering on the buildings to see if the buildings could be reused and so forth and so on, and I hadn't heard anything that I'm aware of.
Nope, nope.
No, so, yes.
Okay, um, any old business? Tracy, any old business?
Two announcements. Two announcements if we have.
Okay, two announcements.
Um, triple E is no longer a threat. We had a nice hard frost and it's snowing outside.
Yay.
So, mosquitoes are no longer a threat and want to let the board know that there'll be an upcoming opening on the finance committee as Katie DeRosa has moved to Middleborough.
Okay.
Okay, so, the announcement at the next meeting.
Yep.
We need to announce.
Put that one.
If there's, maybe there's other openings too, I don't know.
Yeah.
Other openings, Tracy?
They look pretty good right now, but I will do a check before the next meeting.
So, um, that, I think, is something that should be discussed too.
Sure.
How we go about, you know, the person notifies, I, I think it's the town clerk, right?
She's supposed to send a letter. Um, I don't know that it has to be the town clerk as long as it ends up there.
Typically, they either notify us if we're the appointing authority or the town clerk if they're an elected official.
But I think we need to inform the boards of the way it should be done.
Sure.
Because I think that's what's happened in the past, people got appointed to boards and other people weren't aware of the availability of those boards, so.
Yeah, we'll do it.
So, we can discuss that.
Um, again, just going back to the triple E thing, I just, um, I just really want to thank Maureen, Lorraine, Tracy, everybody in the selectmen's office, Kevin Bernardo, the folks in the, you know, health department there, um, just really, really, really good work. I mean, the governor really, when he had come here, was just, you know, just, I think, really happy with the steps we took. So, I really do just appreciate everyone's work on the, on the, on the triple E, um, and I think we all agree that if it's not going to be a bad winter, we're going to have to all start a little earlier next year, so, um, you know, but there really was good work that was done and, um, really good conversation, both Maureen and, and Kevin Bernardo, um, when they were sitting at the roundtable with the governor. Couldn't have been more proud to, you know, to have them representing our town at that roundtable. There was a lot of information that day, um, and they've done a lot of work, so thank you very much for, you know, for all that.
So, yeah, no more decisions.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion.
Yep, go ahead, you can.
I'll make a motion to get an executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, uh, chapter 30A, section 21A, to discuss strategy in respect to collective bargaining on litigation of the open meeting, may be detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigation, uh, position of the public party.
Second. Chair declares.
And not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session.
And not to return to open session.
All those in favor?
McCann, right?
Fabian, aye.
Thank you, everyone.